Call the meeting to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Member Johnson and member Thomas are gone. Approval of the agenda. Is there any other changes, corrections?
One change in the claims.
One change in the claims. That's all on the schedule of claims?
Yes.
Yeah, on the total, there was a change. So, is there any other changes, council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the February 7th, 2018 regular meeting. Receive them in your packet. Is there any questions, changes, clarification?
Vicki, I have a question. If I, because I was absent, if I abstained from this, do we have to wait till the next meeting?
No.
Okay.
You can.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the February 7th, 2018 regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? We have reports and presentations coming up, so... Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is closed. We do not have any public hearings tonight. Now brings us to reports and presentations. Stearns County Attorney Janelle Kendall.
Good evening. Janelle Kendall, you're Stearns County Attorney and also your SOC Center City Attorney for quite a while now. Just talking to the chief, it's... I talked to Darren Danielson about two hours ago. We're actually working with something. The superintendent called me today. And to be able to actually recognize the voice on the other side of the phone when you've got some sort of a crisis going on and know that the superintendent has called you for help, I just gotta tell him I said I'm gonna brag about his guys. Thank you for having good people and keeping them around so that that, over time, when things like that happen, you already know these people, there's no question that they're gonna take your call, that they're gonna answer your questions, and they're gonna dig in. I just really appreciate working with SOC Center, and I always have since I was a baby prosecutor and coming up here when we still had court here. And I would always be in a hurry, and like I said, the troopers will write me too. Don't think that they won't. As well they should. And it's just, it's a positive place to be able to come back and work with you folks. And as I say, just a couple hours ago, having worked with Officer Danielson for many, many years now, knowing that he's taking care of stuff, just like the rest of your officers here. So let's start with the big chunk. That's the diversion packet. As you can see, you didn't have any adults that were diverted, but you had quite a few juveniles. Actually fourteen. And as I've told you over the last couple of years, we have reduced the diversion program to dealing with a little bit more serious offenders. And the first level offenders, the ones that are truly first time, and we literally get the ones who don't even have a speeding ticket, way beginning in the court system, we found that if they got a postcard from my office, they stopped their behavior the same as if they went to court or went through a formal diversion program. And so there were just a big group of offenders that we were spending a lot of time on and that we could get through the system a lot more quickly. And I really fought the online idea and the idea that that was gonna be a meaningful intervention. But when we did the recidivism study and found out that people could get that kind of intervention and change their behaviors effectively, then we can deal with the next level of kids up. And that was one of the things I was talking with Officer Danielson about today, where you've got kids who've got some rough stuff going on at home. Now they're starting to do some other things, and they're kinda moving up the level, what we got going on here. And be able to have the time to reach out to those parents and work with the school on what's going on, rather than those truly lower level offenders. We're gonna address the kids like that a little bit more. So overall, the unfortunate thing about this for the cities is we don't have as much community work service, because all those people who change their behavior with very little intervention, they all used to have to do community service, and now it's a smaller number. They do a little bit more apiece, but they don't do as much. But still, if you have city projects that you need us to work on, that you need some people to do, commonly, like the kids from Albany and Melrose would rather come up here, and your kids would rather go down there, 'cause it's kind of embarrassing to be doing your community service in front of people that know you. But we do still have that available. So even though we have less kids in diversion, as I say, it's a little bit more serious offense, and that community service aspect is still there if you need it. Just give us a call that there's a project that you would like us to apply their time to. Second one we'll talk about is this one, the one that is the city contract. These are the things that we do as your city attorney. These would be your misdemeanor offenses, your DWIs, including your gross misdemeanor DWIs, where you might have a child in the car, or a higher test, something like that. The school bus situation that we have, for example, that's a gross misdemeanor because of the children that were involved. And that, for example, is something that we would be dealing with as your city attorney, although considering the severity of that event as the county attorney, that's something that we're gonna get involved in as well. As you can look at your numbers, though, they're down. And an interpretation, as I say, if the numbers go up, the cops are catching more people. If the numbers go down, I don't know if that means they're catching less people or there's less crime. I don't know. I can tell you that most of the other cities did not go down last year. So maybe that means that something is changing. The numbers are not dramatically different, and they're the same type of categories of offenses that we've seen in the past. Again, your officers do a very nice job on investigating the DWIs. They've always been very good at dealing with the domestic violence offenses, whether those are misdemeanors or all the way up to felonies. So what we're seeing here is not necessarily surprising, just your numbers happened to be down this last year. And when you turn to the second page, then you see the breakout there, and those also include juvenile numbers. So if you look at the blue chunk, it might not be the same as the front page, because the front page is only adults. This page also includes your juvenile offenders. But when you look at your felony numbers, there again, those are down a little bit, but really about the same. And again, seeing the same type of crimes. When I looked through yours earlier today, what we saw, for example, I was in Melrose the other night, of their twenty felonies, ten of them were marijuana, and one was like ten kilos of marijuana. A lot of what we're seeing is marijuana offenses, and I see that's consistent in your jurisdiction. To be a felony marijuana, I'm out in Minnesota, you need quite a bit. Obviously, if you get up into the kilo range, that way qualifies as quite a bit. But these are not small amounts. This is not something that's non-consequential. And your officers are doing a good job of finding that, and were able to prosecute those cases. Then when we turn to this one, the good news for you is that of the twelve hundred felonies committed in Stearns County last year, only about fifty of them were yours. So it's not that your crime is dramatic, your crime has grown up, gone up, you're still a small town. We do see some activity out of the Walmart, we see some activity out of the truck stop 'cause you're on the interstate. But that also brings good things into the town, too. So just being able to keep track of the problems that are going on there. Again, your officers do a good job, the deputies are up here, and as I say, we're all familiar with the State Patrol on ninety-four doing what we need them to do. These numbers have gone up, as you can see, the last three years, and those are pretty much across the board. So there's nothing that particularly sticks out from SOC Center. But I always ask my attorneys before I come up, is there anything specific I should be knowing about? And of course, that school bus situation drew quite a bit of attention. But we are prosecuting that. It's something that's working its way through the system now, so since it's an active case, I can't talk about it too much. But for you to know that we're there, and your superintendent called me at three o'clock, and we're working with your staff there on another situation that, because we know your guys, and because we know that when we call them, they'll get involved, that just makes me feel a lot better about knowing that I'm coming back up here tonight, and I'll probably talk to them on the way home. Questions?
Questions? Come in.
Thank you.
I'm just happy with the working relationship we have with your office and our department, and I think we do things the right way, and hopefully the trend keeps going the way it has.
Yeah, well, we appreciate, as I say, you guys keeping people around, because some of the smaller towns can have a tough time doing that.
Yeah.
Getting them, they're there for a little bit, and then they're off to the next thing. And that ability to build those relationships and get that experience and that foundation can be harder in small towns, and we do a nice job in Stearns County generally, but you guys specifically. And I know his voice when he answers the phone. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will now move on to the Central Minnesota Arts Board. Leslie?
Thank you so much, Mayor, city council members, and guests, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I've spent a good portion of the day today in SOC Center. You have a wonderful community. I've been here a few times, but really experienced it today, and just had a fabulous dinner at the Palmer House, so very good experience. My name is Leslie Licure. I am the Executive Director of the Central Minnesota Arts Board, CMAB. First, I want to congratulate the city on the investments that you have made in the arts. Due to proposals submitted by a number of the organizations that are here in SOC Center, you have been able to leverage sixty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars in grant funds over the last four and a half years. Many of you probably know what the Central Minnesota Arts Board is and the value of the arts, but I'm here to draw your attention to that. Minnesota has a system of eleven regional arts councils that was established in law back in nineteen seventy-nine. It's actually a system that's very coveted by other states in the nation, and every Minnesota county is represented by an arts council. The CMAB is the third largest in appropriation in the state, and we serve Benton, Sherburne, Stearns, and Wright counties. We have eleven granting programs that we provide. Five of them are funded by the Minnesota Legislative General Fund and the Legacy Funds, and open to cities and arts and all nonprofits. And six of them are funded by the McKnight Foundation, and that opportunity is available to individual artists. In two thousand and eight, you may recall, the Minnesota voters elected to increase their sales tax by three-eighths of one percent, which, in support of clean water, habitat, parks and trails, and arts and culture. The passage of that amendment, which has a twenty-five-year lifespan, and we're in our ninth year of grant making, did triple our resources in support of the arts. So we have made some incredible investments in the arts over the last nine years. I do have an annual report, and a couple of handouts that I would like to provide to you. There are five of these, so I'm just gonna hand them and pass them out. The first one is the Central Minnesota Arts Board's annual report, and as you look at that, you'll see that the total investment that the Central Minnesota Arts Board has made in the four counties is, in the fiscal year seventeen, which is July 1 through June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen, is six hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars in grants throughout the four counties. And the arts are big business. It is a huge industry in the state of Minnesota and has been for many years. In the second handout that I provided you, that it shows that the annual economic impact of artists and nonprofit arts and culture organizations is over forty-five million dollars in the four counties. It's over two billion dollars throughout the state of Minnesota. So it does have a significant impact on our economy. Statewide, or as you can see, the total economic impact of forty-six million also generates, on the backside, you'll see the impact on local government. It's in the four counties, it's five million dollars of economic impact. So locally, the Center Area Concert Association achieved multiple Central Minnesota Arts Board grants to provide concerts for hundreds of attendees. The Sinclair Lewis Foundation has achieved grants for, I think Jim told me, twenty-nine years now. I've been there fourteen years, so I've experienced fourteen years of grant making to the Sinclair Lewis Foundation. And they have provided an opportunity for literary artists to attend the Writers Conference, and those attendees come from all over the state and beyond and come to SOC Center for that experience. The Central Minnesota Arts Council, formerly the SOC Center Arts Council, brings music in the park, which is enjoyed by many of your residents and beyond, bringing people in. The Community Legacy Foundation recently achieved the Banshein mural project. We provided a ten thousand dollar grant to complete that project, and it's beautiful. I was over there today, seeing it in person, saw some pictures of it previously, but it's really an amazing accomplishment. All this activity does bring people to SOC Center, where they buy gas, they dine at your local restaurants, they buy, you know, spend money, and that does impact your economy here. And of course, tourism is a very strong economy or industry in the state of Minnesota, and arts do impact that industry. I wonder how many people have come to see your Banshein project since they've seen it in the paper. I know that Dairyland did a great article on that. So I'd like to take a few minutes. I think I sent a video link. Did you get that video? Oh, okay, well, never mind. We have a video that is on our website, and the video link, the video does show a number of projects throughout our region that can inspire and encourage other communities to think big when it comes to the arts. And I know that a lot of your local leaders are looking to apply for additional grants for future projects, and you have an amazing artist in your midst, Roger Renardi, who has accomplished a number of murals, mural projects, and has some future ideas that they're looking to apply for grants. All of our grants are competitive, and all of our grants require local matches, so that we know that the community is in support. So in conclusion, the arts do shape the community's identity, contribute to the development of a new economy, create important opportunities for community engagement, and it enhances the way in which residents get involved in the community. Investing in the arts provides numerous returns for any community, and the CMAB is here to help and support you in your endeavors. So thank you, and create more art.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sinclair Lewis Foundation. I think, Dave, you got the honors.
Yes, I'm filling in for Jim Umhafer, who has gone off to Mexico to do research. Beach research, I think. All right. But I am also on the Sinclair Lewis Foundation Board with Jim, and we've been asked to talk about some of our activities and the impact that we feel we've done on visitors to SOC Center. Two main projects that we have is our Writers Conference and the Boyhood Home. You know, we used to have the Interpretive Center, but we'll talk about that a little bit later. The Writers Conference, as you mentioned, has been going on for twenty-nine years. It's the oldest continuous Writers Conference in Minnesota and the second oldest in the Midwest. You know, it's been very successful. We average about a hundred writers a year that come to the conference. We try to bring in three or four Minnesota writers, generally. Sometimes we've had some from out of state. But in that twenty-nine years, we've seen some of the best writers in Minnesota. John Hessler, Don Shelby was a recent one. And he portrayed Mark Twain, which, he was an out-of-state visitor. Okay. All right. We're looking at expanding to the, in that part of what we do, the Writers Conference, which is part of what Sinclair Lewis's legacy was. As a writer, he dedicated himself to helping other writers, beginning writers. He had an internship program, he spoke at colleges, he kind of helped pass on the trade a little bit, and we do that with the Writers Conference. We're also looking at adding to that a writer's curriculum, where we can come up with a curriculum for elementary, junior high, and adult, which would kind of, because Lewis had some very distinct ways of writing, which were successful. And we thought, oh, we could maybe put that in a curriculum, we could teach that to children, we could teach it to adults as well. Had to add to that. And on the Boyhood Home, in the last year, two thousand and seventeen, we've had people from forty, we've had people from forty states, almost every state in the Union, have come to the Boyhood Home. Worldwide, we've had people from, write these down now, Kenya, Slovakia, China, England, Sweden, Spain, Denmark, Japan, Germany, Brazil, France, New Zealand, Russia, Netherlands, Mexico, Ireland, Italy, and last but not least, Norway. By golly. All right. And something new that we've been seeing more of and that we've been promoting are bus tours. And we've had six bus tours to the Boyhood Home this year, and we hope to kind of continue developing that. Another aspect of the Boyhood Home is that we've seen about five hundred people this year to the Boyhood Home. And that we're working on, kind of, since we've lost the Interpretive Center, what are we gonna do with that interpretation? So we're thinking, well, maybe some of that we could move into the Boyhood Home, and we've been looking at these touchscreen monitor TVs, where you can touch and you can show a video. Or you can touch and hear music, or voices, or a speech. Touch and maybe page through a photo album. And we're trying to figure out a creative way to put that into a piece of furniture that would be period. So you could open up a cabinet, there's a monitor, and that would tell part of the Lewis story. Perhaps not as good as that Interpretive Center, but it'll get us through in these coming years and so forth. You know, we're very grateful, too, that some of the information that we had in the Interpretive Center is the city is storing for us, and we appreciate that. And we use that, that little space that we have, as a storage. But we've been in and out of there, and it kind of gives us a place to, when we need some reference material or some art material in a presentation, particularly now when we're trying to develop our video representation. Also with that video representation, we hope to put that on a Sinclair Lewis YouTube channel. Another thing we've been finding, after, you know, sometimes you get older, you get smarter. Not on everything, but on little things. And a lot of our emphasis on Sinclair Lewis has been his adult life. But we were kind of looking around recently, and he spent his youth in SOC Center, you know, and I'm currently working on a book called Becoming Sinclair Lewis, about his youth, and there are a lot of good stories there. One, like, in his diaries, he wrote about helping out in the volunteer fire department in three fires. In the old days, I guess the bell would ring, and every able-bodied person would go out and fight a fire. Who's thought of Sinclair Lewis as a firefighter? And he has a lot of those kind of stories, in cutting, trapping muskrats on SOC Lake, riding bicycles out to Birch Lake, having picnics and things like that. So we want to thank you very much for the help that you've given us. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions?
Thanks, Dave. Thank you, Dave.
Six D Police Department Monthly Report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we'll start out with the, excuse me, boys, we'll start out with the activity report for January of this year. So some of the numbers we had there, we had two arrests for possession of marijuana and paraphernalia, we had one felony warrant arrest. We had six juvenile problem calls, we did thirty-one matter of information calls, fifteen medical calls, six accidents, patrol at the school twenty-two times. We had fifty-one special detail, that's basically when we check our, do walkthroughs at Walmart and stuff. We had thirteen alarms, twenty-seven assists for businesses, twenty-seven assists for other agencies. We had fourteen citizen contacts. We had two arrests for possession of methamphetamine. We had seventeen suspicious calls. We had eighteen welfare checks, and we gave out a hundred and sixty-five verbal warnings. So we had a total call, number of calls of four hundred and forty-nine and a hundred and sixty-five verbals, so that totaled six hundred and fourteen for the month. And then we compare that to December, we were up by calls twenty-seven, down by thirty for warnings, so down by three for a total. And then for, compare that to two thousand and seventeen, we're up sixty-three calls, down by sixty-five for warnings, and down total of two. So any questions on the January?
Questions?
I just noticed there was only one school bus stop armed violation, and that's, I'm assuming, just because that was the only one within city limits, but I understand that's been kind of an issue out on the highways.
Yeah, we've had a few, but not alarming the amount of numbers.
Yeah, one is too many, in my opinion.
Yes.
Yeah. Abandoned vehicles. Is this just where people drop them off and, from out of town, and walk away from them?
Yeah, a lot of just left vehicles, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or it's a call on one that's, I think most of the time it's a call on one that's been sitting for a while, and we categorize it as abandoned.
Okay.
So it's kind of deceiving, too, so.
All right. The other question I have is, there's a lot of cities, I think St. Cloud is one of them, on false alarms. They're starting to document for false alarms, that certain residents get their businesses start getting too many false alarms, they're starting to actually put a fine to that. Is that thirteen false alarms, is that something that we should start looking at a policy on our level, or is that...
You know, I think if you saw a particular business, I think it's widespread, though, so it's pretty even, you know, so if you, if I guess if you saw a bunch for one facility or one business or one residence, maybe you'd think about it. But I think overall, that amount is pretty understandable.
It's doable, okay. Because I think most of these towns that are doing that penalty for false alarm is based, because if numerous times at one location, and that takes an officer off the street every time they have to respond to a false.
Right, yeah.
So I was just wondering if that's something that we need to keep track of, or if you think it's not an issue right now?
I don't believe it is. You know, something we do keep track of, though, just to make sure that one business or residence isn't, you know, increasing like that, but overall, it's pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, annual report?
Annual report. Thank you for being patient, for waiting for it. The Super Bowl kind of set me, set us back a little bit. So we'll just go by page here, we'll go to page four of it. We'll start, well, that's the driving under influence. You'll see that we made forty DWI arrests, that's down from forty-six from two thousand and sixteen. Fifteen of those forty DWIs were being under the influence of a controlled substance. And then the breakdown for the rest of them, eleven of them were fourth-degree DWIs, ten were third-degree DWIs, and four were second-degree DWIs. We had no first degrees. So you see the curve there, it's kind of been going down from the past couple of years, went from forty-nine to forty-six to forty. Underage drinking was down. And then the two busiest months for DWIs, November and December, the bottom graph there.
Quick, one quick question.
Yep.
On the DUIs for controlled substance, how's that tested? You know, I know you do the normal test for, when you, for an alcohol.
Yeah, there's a lot of observation towards controlled substance that's officer, you know, base visible, it's not so much testing that you do with them.
Okay.
You do kind of go through some of the DWI field sobriety stuff, but there is other tests correlated with that, so it's a little more in-depth procedure, but, and more observation from the officer that has to be trained for that particular stuff, which most of our guys have been.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's see, page five, then, or, oh, I did it backwards here, sorry. We'll go back to page three. Where it shows a lot of the different types of calls that we have, some of the ones I just highlighted there, the assist businesses, you'll see we did three-hundred-seventy-nine to fifty-eight from last year, and that's basically because we are really patrolling Walmart, making a point to get through there. And then a lot of the construction sites, the bank when it was being built, and now the apartment complex, we make a lot of stops and checks and walk-through on stuff like And then a lot of the, we started logging a lot of the outdoor storage facilities, because we did have some break-ins there that were concerning, so we really started stepping it up there and specifying, and we're checking on those, so that goes under that category. Forgeries, you see we had eleven compared to one last year, gas no pays are considerably down, juvenile problems were up, seventy-three compared to sixty-four last year, obstructing legal process, on the next column over there, you see our, we had eleven compared to one. Damage to property, you'll see is way down, we had seventeen compared to thirty-three for last year. And then the special detail there, you'll see that's three-hundred-and-thirty-one compared to ninety. That, we made a purpose on checking our impound lot, that's basically falls under that because of the, some of the issues we had with our impound lot, so we're really noting it and patrolling that and logging it now, so that's, that's why that number is so, so high. And then you'll see the totals there, up from last year slightly, but our guys are logging a lot more this year, just for the fact that we, I think it's important that we need to start doing that. We'll go to page five, then, on some of the bigger crimes, you'll see theft was down from sixty-two, and we had eighty-four in 2016. Robberies are up, we had zero in 2016, we had two in 2017. Burglaries are up by one. And then the assaults are down considerably, we had four compared to ten last year. Arson, the same. Domestic assaults are down, we had twenty-four last year, and this year we had fourteen. Sexual assaults are up, we had one last year and four this year. Page six, some of the traffic violations, all pretty comparable, the driving after revocation is up a bit, no proof insurances are down, that's good, and no Minnesota DL citations have gone down, so that's, that's good. And we wrote a lot less seat belts, speeding, we wrote four-hundred-and-two compared to three-hundred-and-twenty-nine last year. Verbal warnings were pretty comparable. Next note there, the accidents, we had more accidents, I think people are, are starting to pay more attention to their phones and to too many other things in their vehicles, so you're starting to see accidents go up, so a lot of inattentive driving stuff, and tickets were issued for that. Last part there, assisting other agencies, everything, Minnesota State Patrol, we were down with assists there, Stearns County, we helped them, our, we, our numbers were up for helping them a little bit more, Melrose was down, Todd County about the same, and our K-9 assists for other agencies are about the same there. Some of the drug statistics on page seven, you'll see the possession, arrest made for possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia, up slightly there from 2016, I'm looking at the graph. Controlled substance, controlled substance arrests for controlled one, two, three, and five are all, all up slightly, so that's starting to become more prevalent. Warrant arrests, they're all pretty comparable, as to 2016. And of course, you have questions, we can sure ask, as we go along, I'm just trying to speed it up. Oh, page eight, then, the K-9 assist. We, from arrests made from the K-9 assists, we had two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four grams of marijuana seized, a hundred-and-forty-four grams of methamphetamine, three grams of cocaine, twelve grams of heroin, two-point-two grams of hash oil, and some prescription pills, and then paraphernalia, three-hundred-and-forty-six pieces of paraphernalia. Deployments by month, look like July and February were Joe's busy months for deploying his K-9 for traffic. By the week, you see Saturday, Sunday are pretty much the bigger days, kind of in the middle of the week there, too, Wednesday, Thursday. And then by hours, well, that's basically from ten PM to one AM, pretty much is the, when he's deployed, sunny for that. Page nine, look at the calls for service, the line, when you look at the lines, they're always pretty comparable. It looked like, of course, first the calls per hour, are always the busiest between ten o'clock and probably one o'clock, the way the graph goes there. The calls per day, pretty much the same thing, Saturday, Sunday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, starting on Thursday, the curve goes up. Calls per month, it looked like July and September were probably our two big calls for months. Page ten, forfeitures, 2017, Sauk Center Police Department retained seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents in forfeitures, up from five-thousand-eight-ninety-three in 2016. The funds came from eight vehicles, four of the forfeitures were for alcohol-related offenses, and four were for drug-related offenses. Next paragraph, just kind of explains some of our training, two-hundred-and-fifty-one hours of training, and the money that is spent on that, and also we have online training that we do now, that each officer at least does one a month, if not more. I failed to mention, the county attorney's office also gives us a lot of free training, which is very helpful, so that's very good. And then, you know, you have all the mandated state post requirement classes of firearms qualification, de-escalation strategies, use of force, TASER, DMT refreshers, first responder, driving courses, and now we just also received a document from the Minnesota Post Board that they're going to be implementing that we need to get sixteen hours of additional training per license, time of classes that'll include crisis intervention, mental illness crisis, conflict management and mediation, and recognizing and valuing community diversity and culture differences, so you kind of anticipated that coming with what's been happening in the, in the world. So, and also some more use of force stuff, so officers will be doing a lot more training with that. The last paragraph there, the budget, in 2017, the police department was given a budget of eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, basically for all expenditures. In the police administration portion of the budget, we ended with a surplus of thirty-thousand-five-thirty-nine. For the police patrol portion of the budget, we had a deficit of twenty-six-thousand-five-thirteen. We also had a surplus in the emergency service sirens expenditures of two-thousand-eight-ninety-four, leaving a total surplus of six-thousand-nine-twenty-seventy-four. In the overall expenditures portions of the budget, on the revenue side of the budget, we had an excess of nine-thousand, nine-thousand-seven-eighty-four, which left us with an overall excess to the total budget of sixteen-thousand-seven-oh-five. Don't look at my math too well, and nothing's final till the audit. Is that fair?
Brian always, Brian always seems to throw those surplus budgets at the end of his report, because that just helps in budget for next year.
Yeah. And then, of course, you know, we do a lot of the community, Night to Unite, and the pumpkin, you know, our officers are out there meeting with community groups of all types, which is really enjoyable, and I think the K-9 officer gets to do a lot of demonstrations, and I think that really is good for the kids and the adults also to see, and I think that goes over very well for the community, so. And then the last page is just my overall narrative of the, basically of the report, so I won't read that. Any questions on that?
Questions? Comments?
Good job.
Thank you.
How's it going with the new schedule, with the new full-time, and?
We're a, we're a month, well, yeah, a month into it almost, so, yeah, it's, the feedback already seems pretty positive.
Okay.
The officers seem to be enjoying it right now, and so, well, hopefully, it's taken a little bit for everyone to get used to it now, and, and the timeframes and hours, so.
Getting the scheduling figured out.
Right.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I think it's gonna, I think in the end here, it's really gonna be a positive thing for the officers.
Okay.
And I want to thank the officers for the good job, they, our department, like Janelle says, you know, it means a lot to have that longevity with all the guys, and, you know, it makes my job so much easier that, you know, they can handle a lot of that stuff themselves, and, and we have a good city to, you know, staff to work with, and that means a lot, so appreciate everyone's help, and counsel, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Now move on to our action items. Approve agreement with NSI for creation of TIF district.
Okay, as, as part of the ongoing application for tax increment financing from Felling Trailers that the Economic Development Authority has met and discussed, we've reached out to Northland Securities for consulting assistance, and this is to set up the district. The assistance would be to conduct the legal and financial aspects of establishing an economic development TIF district, including writing the plan, providing cost estimates and actuarial estimations, and providing for certification of the district to the state. The costs are billed on an hourly basis, and it's a, we have, she has a not-to-exceed sixty-five-hundred dollars in there, in looking at her estimated time to spend on each of them, because this is a really simple one, I don't think we'll meet that. But as part of the application process, there's an escrow account that's set up that's funded by the applicant, and we draw on that. And then in addition to that, we have existing funds in that old TIF District one-dash-one that we can use to, to front the money, and then we'll get the money back from the escrow, so I'm not too concerned about that, but there are no general fund dollars that go allocated to this. I did include a copy of the agreement with the tasks that will be included, so if you had a time to look through that, but that's kind of all the steps that it takes to set up a tax increment financing district. And I also included in there another copy of the, the timeframe, and how that's gonna, how we expect it to put, go together. So what I'm looking for tonight is just to approve the financial planning agreement with Northland Securities for Tax Increment Financing District one-dash-twelve.
Questions? The EDA has reviewed this?
The EDA, yes, the EDA has been working with Northland Securities for many years now, too, so they have a high level of comfort with them, and so I'd recommend that we go with them for this one as well.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve Financial Planning Agreement with Northland Securities Incorporated for Tax Increment Financing District one-dash-twelve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Last minute comments. Call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three in favor, none against. Seven B, approved resolution 2018-dash-zero-nine, calling for public hearing for Tax Increment Financing District one-dash-twelve.
This goes right along with the one before, that the EDA, they've met with representatives of Felling Trailers regarding expansions. A phase one of the expansion involves the construction of corporate headquarters on the site. The EDA has recommended that the city consider the creation of the Tax Increment Financing District to capture the taxes on the increased tax base for payment to Felling to help defray costs for the construction. The district would be an economic development district, the first step would be to call for a public hearing, and at the hearing, estimated tax creation dollars will be available. The, I do have the attached resolution and the notice, and there's quite a, quite a lag in time, because we have to create the plan, and then that has to be provided to the school and the county more than thirty days in advance, so the public hearing is actually scheduled for April fourth, 2018, and at that time, we would have, have the actual public hearing, but we'll have the plan sometimes, sometime in advance, which I'll also give to you, but I'll have to be providing it to the school and the county. And so what we're looking for tonight is simply to approve the resolution, calling for the public hearing, and it's actually a modification of Development District one and establishment of Tax Increment Financing District one-dash-twelve.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-dash-zero-nine, calling for a public hearing on the modification of Development District number one, and the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District one-dash-twelve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three in favor, none against. Seven C, approve removal of late fees on overdue billing.
This is a request from the Sauk Center Melrose Youth Hockey Association. They requested that the city council consider forgiveness of late fees that were incurred on their ice time usage billing for the, for the 2016-17 season, which would have been from last October to this past March, so that's, you know, that, that season. Billing for October to December was billed on twelve-twenty-nine-sixteen and paid on four-twenty-eight-seventeen, and billing for January to February was billed on March twenty-second and paid on August tenth. And so during that time period, late fees accumulated in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. The association board met, and the president came in and spoke with me, and they are requesting that these fees be written off or forgiven. So that is the request of the association tonight.
Questions?
Is it in our, is it in our contract with the ice time that the billing happens on these dates, the December and the March?
We have a new contract now, started, that started in July, and it actually lays out the dates, but prior to that, we always billed the end of the year and the end of the season, and then they had a thirty-day, it was a net thirty invoice to pay within thirty days of billing.
So it was in the contract before, that they had to pay within thirty days of billing on?
Right, that, thirty days of billing has been the city policy for many years.
Looking back with Vicky on the last four or five years of payments, and there's two times in the last, or three times in the last four years or four seasons, that they failed to pay the bill when notified, and we, they came along and we, they paid it, or they didn't pay the late fees, and then they asked for forgiveness, and we said, okay, fine, as long as you don't do it again, we'll forgive it. Well, it's been a standing track record that they're good for a while, and then all of a sudden, it's like, no, we forgot to pay this, and now we want you to forgive it, and?
I, I don't know if it's necessarily forgetting to pay, I think it's just how their collections plan out for how their season works, which, if we could build it into the contract to make it what's most reasonable for them, and not necessarily what, you know, just so it doesn't look like, I mean, I- and not necessarily what, you know, just so it doesn't look like, I mean, I, I think historically, they've been good on their word and they've paid. The late fees though, just doesn't line up with their season, which I can understand and it looks bad to the association. But I think they're still using the ice and they're still paying. I just wish that there was a way to figure that out, that we could make it work for them and still make it work for us.
I, and I'm not totally certain that it would change anything.
So you think changing the dates to what their season aligns with, with their collections wouldn't?
No, I don't think that would make any difference because they've, they're, they're getting notified. They've got thirty days. If we can't, if it doesn't fit with their budget, come in and tell us.
Yeah.
Don't wait until there's five hundred dollars worth of late fees and then say, can you forgive this? Because you've done it two or three times before.
Yeah.
You know, I, I just, you know, we're looking at the arena that's never always had the best track record on finance. And to keep forgiving, uh, late fees due to whatever reason is, we won't, we don't let anybody else get by with it.
Yeah.
So I don't believe that it should happen.
I agree.
Here, so it's up to the council of, you know, I can't make a motion on it, but I.
I'll make a motion that we don't forgive these late fees this year.
Okay, we have a motion to not forgive the accumulated late fees on the ice time billing statement for the Saxon Air Hockey Association. Do I have a second?
I.
I can second it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it. We have a motion by Diane, seconded by Warren. Any other comments, concerns?
I, I know we want to work with these people because they're the main people for running it. But when you can ask for forgiveness one time and we do it, and then you make the payment on time the next time and then the two times in a row, you pay it, you, we would have to waive the late fees. And then you're good for two seasons without having a late. And then all of a sudden it comes up and asks for forgiveness again. To me, that's not our problem. It's.
Right, right.
The bookkeeping problem on their end and at least come in and say, hey, we're gonna be late because we don't have the funding, rather than waiting until it comes to that point.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm standing on it. Is there any other comments? We have a motion and a second to not forgive the late fees. We'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries three in favor, none against. Unfinished business, two thousand and eighteen CIP storm sewer easements.
Um, this is on the, the two thousand and eighteen project. I have some storm sewer information to cover with you. And then Chuck is here from Stan Tech. If you have any additional questions that he can answer regarding the project as a whole. But we, uh, the staff has met on several occasions with representatives from the former Gulf Country Club and regarding the potential savings on storm, stormwater costs and on needed easements to accommodate those savings. So you did get in your packet copies of the map and this is the most recent of kind of the idea. I'm sorry it came in upside down. It's kind of the way the PDF maker on my computer put them in there. But kind of the, what deviates from the original plan is that we'd have a pond that would be constructed adjacent to Main Street, Main Street North on the Gulf Course. It's approximately four hundred feet north of Country Club Drive. It's kind of like the north end of, of Fairway Pines, but on the Gulf Course side, that, that area. It's kind of the lower area right now. So that's where the water from Main Street would go. Uh, this would eliminate the need for piping that water around down Country Club into the lake. A second pond would be located north of the clubhouse along Lake Shore Drive. And if you're familiar with kind of down in there, there is actually an outlet down there right now. And the pond would be in that area. Uh, water would go underground, kind of behind the curb on Lake Shore Drive by the clubhouse. And then it would daylight as it got past there and then it would go down to that pond. Um, then this, the water that would go with there would be a lot of the water from the Elm Old Country Club area. Kind of in that northern half between Fifth and Fourth Street would kind of go that direction. Uh, the Gulf Course would accept the storm water and they would eliminate the need for one of the storm structures and we'd remove that water from being discharged into the lake. Uh, the use of these ponds allows for some downsizing of the city pond on Fourth Street because not as much water is flowing in that direction. Uh, the Gulf Course would construct the ponds to the city specs and eliminate the construction cost. That is one thing that we haven't decided on, but that's a proposal that they kind of had was that they would like to construct it themselves. That way they could maybe make the cha, change the shape a little bit and have the type of restoration that they want. Um, that idea has been floated, I mean, they suggested that idea to us and I needed to ask your thoughts on that. Um, the Gulf Course then would assume maintenance of the ponds, including like cleanup after rain events, you know, Coke bottles that wash out there, that type of thing. They would be responsible for taking care of that. Uh, the city would hold an easement in perpetuity for use of the ponds for discharge. The only way that easement would go away is if the council declared it to go away. Say some years, fifty years from now, um, the Gulf Course gets developed then they'd have to find an alternate place for that water to go. But our easement is for that area and it would stay. It's not something that they could just fill in and not use anymore. And then the city may be eligible for additional, what they call green funding through the Saxon River Watershed District because we would be, um, this is a more positive environmental aspect of the project versus putting it in a structure and dumping it in the lake. Now we're running it over ground, we're putting it in a pond and then irrigating the Gulf Course and, and that type of thing. And then, but the city and the country club will need to agree on a value of the easement. And then that would be an assessment credit rather than a cash payment. So, um, there's a couple, it's kind of a win-win from an environmental and a cost savings perspective. And then also for ongoing maintenance savings of the storm structure. There's a lot of different aspects to this. So I wanted to come to the council to kind of authorize this, to continue to pursue down this road if you think that that is the appropriate way to go. And then maybe involve the finance committee in that too. So when we come back to the next meeting, we have it done. And so that's kind of the, the, the direction that we're going. Um, the representatives from the, the clique family are, are positive about this. And we've met here in the office, we've also met there out on site at the clubhouse. And I think that's kind of the direction that we would like to pursue it. And if you have any questions about how that actually would look, you know, Chuck can answer those questions for you. Otherwise, I'm just kind of looking for kind of general consent to keep going down this direction. Unless you feel like we're way off base or something, we don't want to spend more time on it. But, uh, we think this is a good opportunity for both of us.
Comments?
Sounds good to me.
As far as I'm concerned, we're going down the right path here and we're pushing up against some deadlines as far as, uh, going for bids or?
We're kind of past the deadline, so.
Past the deadlines, we don't need to go any farther than they did, so.
And, and Chuck has calculated all, like the construction savings costs and those types of thing. And there's other costs that we're gonna, we'll, we'll save, like ongoing maintenance and we'll, you know, there's different things like that. But we would, uh, look at all those numbers and then we'd like to come back at the next meeting and say, this is what, what we're proposing collectively as a group. And if the council approves that, we'd be ready to move forward.
And I think, you know, Heidi and I are both on the finance committee. So as far as being in on that, I think that makes sense. It just lets the council know that at least it's not just staff working with these numbers. And we're involved on what the win-win for the city is on this and the people on that end of town, so.
Do you have any questions for Chuck about the project itself? I mean, he brought that packet of kind of preliminary plans or close to final plans.
Maybe after I get a chance to look at it.
Okay.
A little longer.
I just meant, I had been on the plans itself, kind of as a, as a general rule for the project itself.
No, as of right now, I don't have anything, once we get to that, but.
The only thing that pops out at me is, um, and your question about whether the Gulf Course would, would, um, would, uh, construct the ponds to the city specs. I think the last time that we kind of ran into an issue, not necessarily with ponds, but with, um, allowing a properties engineer to come up with their own design and making sure it met our engineer specs was with Gasmart property, um, with their runoff under their, um, the.
From off their property into their holding.
And I don't know if that ever was resolved and just to make sure.
It was resolved, but this one is a little bit different in that the design is part of the.
Project.
It will be, it's already in there. So I mean, they, it's not like carte blanche, do what you want.
That's what my.
When, when they were talking about, you know, this is our design and I need to have this much volume, this much area. And we put a square on there and they want an oval or a kidney shape. That's kind of what, but the same capacity would be there.
Okay.
Right. So general consensus that, uh, staff keeps going and then finance committee will be involved when we get to that point.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
We have no new business. And it takes us to our consent agenda. As we were told before, in the approval of the agenda, there wasn't, numbers change. So schedule of claims, unpaid claims of eighty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. And January checks of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four dollars and seventy-four cents. Uh, we have a Elmer Zies Bar and Event Resort Center is requesting a temporary off-premise liquor permit to utilize their on-sale liquor license at Ladies Night Out at the Civic Arena on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. And we have resolution number two thousand and eighteen dash ten, approving an off-site gambling permit for the Saxon American Legion. The permit would allow for bingo to be held on July twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen at St. Clair Lewis Park. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, seconded by.
I'll second.
Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three in favor, none against. Informational items?
Just have a couple informational items. The Board of Appeal and Equalization Meeting is Monday, April sixteenth at one o'clock. I do need a quorum of the city council in attendance at that meeting. That's where the county assessor will be here, where people can come in and address their property tax values. Um, we may see, uh, a little bit of an uptick in attendance at that meeting because there has been quite a shift in valuation versus sales in the last study period. So, um, we may have a little more activity than normal. But make sure to put that on your calendars and let me know if you won't be able to attend. But I'll also send out an email you can just respond to. Uh, the other thing is the hazardous waste collection day has been set. Uh, that's the one where you can bring your paint and oil and that type of thing up to the Civic Arena. It's on Wednesday, June thirteenth. And then one last item, I just noticed in the paper, um, the public hearing notice for the vacation of four hundred and tenth street by the township is scheduled for March seventh. So we should have an answer on that.
Okay.
After that time period, so.
Vicki, I have a question. On that hazardous waste collection day, June thirteenth, what time is that?
It starts at, I believe, nine to one.
Nine to one. I'll, I'll volunteer for that again.
Perfect.
And I'll be there for the equalization meeting as well.
Okay.
Any other questions on the informational items? That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.